...about what you took away from the conference about the minutes, I thought that was really important.
Oh, yeah. Actually, yes, I can do it right now.
Sure.
Why not?
Okay.
Only this. I think it was actually the board chair workshop that I attended the day before the conference. The point was emphasized that minutes are supposed to be a record of what was done, not what was said.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So, as long as the minutes contain a record of all of the actions that the board takes, you know, the new business, we have all of the votes captured, all of that stuff. The other stuff can be captured as something very brief, like just gotta leave an update on this, or, you know, something like that. It doesn't have to be a full summary of the topic, particularly since we have the archived video to go to if anyone has.
That was just great to understand.
Yeah, but that.
There is software now, too, where a recording in an instant can be made into a transcript.
Transcribed, yeah.
That would actually be really cool, to have a transcript if people really want to read through.
To be made available on the website as well.
With the recording.
Yeah.
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 That might be something to look into. I just came across this, actually. You know what does it is Loom, that software, Loom.
Oh, okay.
Will do that. There might be, I think there's several, and I don't know that it's, I don't know. It might be like a time limit or whatever. I'm not sure if there's a cost associated with it. But I think that that would be great, because then you actually have a written record of conversations and things, too, and those can be searchable as well.
Yeah, and if we did the transcripting, it would be like A- A- eight compliance. So, but I would suggest, like, yeah, we would use that video. Is that, are we actually using that video? Oh, okay.
For our recordings.
Right, yeah, you know, like, something like an owl where it zooms into the face, and then we can have the transcription underneath, so we know who's speaking.
Oh, gosh, that's technical, yeah. That'd be cool, though.
But legally.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
Minutes should be what was done, not what was said.
Wow.
It's kind of a pithy way of capturing it.
Yeah.
We're double documenting right now.
Yeah, we are.
Kind of, yeah.
We are.
Yeah, over-documenting, maybe.
Okay, that moves us into the report of the chair. Next town officials meeting, for those of you who are interested, is November 9th. I believe we've moved that to 8:30 in the morning going forward, and this time is South Berwick's, is it not?
Yes. It'll be at the police station.
It'll be, oh, at the new conference room at the police station?
Yes.
Okay. So, as always, I will coordinate who no more than three of us will, can actually go to that. Okay, good. Says here, there's a school board election on November 8th. November 8th is, of course, election day, and there's a lot more than a school board election on the ballot, so please, everybody, vote.
South Berwick's only.
But, yes, but the, one of the South Berwick seats is up, as it is every year in November. It happens to be mine. So, yeah, please vote. Third thing, on my report, several of us attended the Maine School Management Association Conference, the annual conference up in Augusta on the 27th and 28th of October, which was last Thursday and Friday. I want to give just a very brief summary. I learned a ton. There was just so many good clinics. I'll start by saying that the keynote address was delivered by a man who I had not heard of before, named David Horsager, and I'm gonna get in trouble for saying that I'd not heard of him, because I'm sure he's famous to everybody else in the world. His keynote address was on building trust and how organizational success, whether it's a school district or a corporation or whatever, everything that you need to achieve is the underlying important thing is building and maintaining trust. It was really, it was a great talk. He was a very, very dynamic speaker. There were 63 clinics over the course of the two days. I went to eight of them. I was there both Thursday and Friday. Of special interest to me was a couple of Drummond-Woodsom clinics on hot topics in school litigation and top issues that school boards are expected to face in the coming year. All interesting stuff. I attended two different sessions on electric buses, and those were cool. I learned a ton. It's way more complicated than I feared. Good news, this first round of EPA funding for school districts, Wells-Ogunkwit, has gotten a grant from the EPA for 11 buses.
Wow.
So, if they go through with the full 11, that'll be something we definitely want to keep our eyes on, to watch their deployment of that, because the charging infrastructure that has to be deployed, at least one of the speakers suggested that, for the climate we live in, it likely requires level three fast charging, which requires three-phase power. Looking at you, do we have three-phase power on the premise? Do you know?
At the bus garage?
Well, so that's a separate question, as to whether we would put that infrastructure in place at the bus garage, or whether that would mean something else. I mean, I. Okay, yeah. Anyway, it was fascinating stuff. I got to ride an electric bus, which was cool. It's very, very quiet.
Oh, it's fun.
Very quiet.
Interactive.
I did attend a session where the superintendent in New York talked about the process they went through with a challenge to some materials in their library, a particular book. I think the title of the book was "It's Perfectly Normal." It was a book about puberty.
Yeah.
And someone in the, someone who lives in the district but did not have a child in the district challenged it. So, he just went through how they stepped through the process as specified in the policies. They had a series of very respectful discussions with the person and ultimately came to a resolution. I don't think the person was fully happy, but was happy about the resolution, about the way that the process was conducted, about the respectfulness.
And it was your trust foundation, right there?
Hmm?
That's your trust foundation, right there?
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to talk about. Three others of you, were there any other highlights that you wanted to talk about real quick, or?
Well, strategic, I attended a session on strategic planning, and it just validated that we did what we needed to do as a school board recently, and also the superintendent evaluation was discussed, and I think we're in really good shape comparatively, and other districts are kind of moving that way, because it is required. So, anyway, yeah, it was very informative sessions, and I'm glad I attended.
I attended the DEIB clinic, which is diversity, equality, inclusion and belonging, equity in belonging, which is basically fostering a culture of belonging in public schools. There was the superintendent of Bangor that was there, and he actually, they have a DEIB coordinator that they work with, and they formed an advisory committee, which basically promotes the goals of accepting, respecting, valuing differences, which really allows students to have a vote and encourages them to have diversity of their thought, which really goes on that whole community of trust. So, I thought that was a really great clinic.
Yeah, to echo what Heather said, I think that the clinics that I attended were super informative, but also really went to show that in many of the areas, we are really in good shape. A lot of them were about public comments at board meetings, and I feel like we sort of tightened things up there a couple of years ago. And, yes, the things that we've already been working on or have completed were just sort of out in the wings for other boards. I did attend one that wasn't spoken about yet, and that was in Brunswick. The superintendent gave a presentation on, he has a student, superintendent and student advisory council. And so, it was sort of like an advisory board that was newly in the works, so I think it's just in its first year. And it's sort of, so instead of having, it's different from student government at the high school, but it's sort of like a group of students, sort of like student government, but they work with, meet with the superintendent once a month and sort of just say, like, "Here are the issues at school," but the students were also there, and they were on the panel, and said it was very eye-opening to realize, like, you know, you can have all these things that you think are wrong, and all these problems that you want to talk about, but learning that a lot of the stuff on the superintendent's end is really focused on legal and policy, and that, like, there can be problems and things you want different, but a lot of that is following the law, and that it's really policy-driven. So, it was interesting, and one takeaway I had from that is that they're really working, so they sort of took applications for the students to be on this advisory group, and noticed that they got a lot of the same students that were in Student Gov, the top athletes. And so, this year's focus has really been a push to find the students who aren't involved in everything, but really would have a valuable voice at the table, which I thought was interesting. Yeah, yeah. So, really reaching out, and so you can say, "Come apply. This is interesting. Come apply." But the students whose voice might be most valuable, you need to actively seek them out, more than just invite them. So, I thought that was interesting.
Ooh, thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, but it was great.
Yes.
Important. The vendors were also quite helpful as well. There's a lot about environmental sustainability, and there's a lot of free resources that we could be tapping into. I left a lot of the pamphlets at home, but just programs that can come to the various schools and provide hands-on learning opportunities for K through 12. And, you know, even just looking into, like, some of the grants. I know we have the grant for the electric buses, but there were grants that ended, I guess, the end of October for charging stations and things like that. There's, like, so many different grants out there that we could tap into, to kind of push our initiatives forward, which it was nice to talk to folks about it, because there was a lot of solar companies at this conference.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your place. That concludes my report and brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I want to start off with is that we have our, a couple of our annual Veterans Day celebrations that are taking place. So, the Marshad Middle School Veteran Celebration is gonna be this Friday at 9:00 AM. Just to remind her that if you are planning to attend, you probably want to get there early. Parking is typically difficult. They come by, so just try to be there a little bit early. And then, on Thursday, the 10th, at 9:00 AM, the Marshall Great Works School will be having their presentation. So, just if you plan to go there, it'll be a great opportunity. We, probably a month ago or so, we had a presentation about special education. This kind of, the next part of that presentation is gonna be around Section 504, and what is Section 504? So, tonight, we're gonna hear a little bit about that. It's a rather lengthy presentation. There's a lot to it, but just certainly if you have questions. But the goal of these two presentations are, are these the types of questions that you may get? It's really good for you to have an overview knowledge as to kind of, what is the Section 504? What does the 504 plan mean? What does special education wants to process? And the process of both of those things is to be able to guide people in the right direction. So, I'll turn it over to Special Services Director Scott Ruin.
Good evening, everyone. So, just to remind you, we did a presentation on special education. I go walking away from the microphone. We did a presentation on special education. About a month ago, we talked about how kids qualify and the three prongs that they need to qualify. That's an education law. That's, it's a law, IDEA, the Individuals Education, Education Act, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which creates a flow-through system to the state, right? And so, there's federal money that's attached to following their rules, and it flows to the state, flows to the district. That's governed educationally. Section 504 is actually a non-discrimination law. And people talk about Section 504, but there's a little more to it than that. Okay, so what ties in are these other two acts. So, there's the ADA, the Americans with Disability Act, and then there was an ADA AA, which is the Amendment Acts of 2008, which expanded the categories for 504 eligibility. So, it's really important to understand it's a discrimination statute, and it has a whole different complaint process to it. And I'm gonna try to, this is a universal presentation. Actually, this time when I made the presentation, I'm gonna make a presentation I can use for the board. I'm gonna use a presentation I can use for the teachers. I'm gonna use a presentation. So, this is very long. You're gonna see me skip through some things that I don't think you probably need to go that in-depth, then, but I'll give you an overview. So, here's the focus. No other qualified individual with a disability in the United States shall solely by the reason of his or her disability be excluded from participation, be denied benefits of, or be subject to discrimination under any program activity, dot, 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 that receives federal funds. So, your entitlements, your IDEA, your free and reduced lunch ties you into following Section 504. So, there's some steps. So, we try to manage resources using processes, or else the systems become overwhelmed. So, the first is child find. Just like special education, we have a child find responsibility under Section 504, and I'll hit on that in a minute. Then it's evaluation. What does the data say? It's eligibility determination. Are you in the program? You hear a lot about 504 placement. That doesn't mean placement in another place. It means placement in the program within the schools. Periodic reevaluation. There actually is no rule about this, but we use the special education rule, because that makes the most sense, where we reevaluate every three years. There's procedural safeguards, just like IDEA, and parents are provided a copy of that. And then records, I'm not gonna go into. That really is governed by your retention policy in the state. I'm gonna probably skip that today. So, child find, we have the responsibility to locate, identify, and evaluate not only students with disabilities under IDEA, but also students with conditions under Section 504. So, how do we do that? Well, we have our normal screenings that we do at the younger levels when kids come in, and we have data and screening like that. But essentially, we're looking at these questions. Who are the students that are off the grid? Off-grid. They are here. Where are they? Who are the students that are struggling the most? Who are being referred for discipline? Who are being considered for retention? Who has a serious injury or illness? And who exhibits signs of depression, anxiety, or other mental health conditions? And then who is evaluated but did not qualify for special education? This is really important, because if Section 504 is implemented in the correct way, when we get to a point where a student's not eligible for specialized instruction but may need supplemental aids and services such as OTPT Behavior Consult, we can tie that in and make that a seamless system, rather than have gaps where kids are not served. And just like IDEA, it's anybody within the physical boundary of the district. So, here are some common mistakes. Excluding students who get good grades. Excluding students who have episodic conditions. And originally insisting, implementing all tiers of MTSS before a referral to 504. So, just like special education, we have certain people that can make referrals. A parent, of course, school personnel, and then any other person who has knowledge that the student has a condition. So, this is a little flexible, because sometimes we play different roles, and there's different needs. Like, if a student needs academic accommodations, there's probably not really the need for the nurse to be part of that team. But essentially, you're looking at three people who have knowledge of the student and knowledge about data available to the student. So, generally, you're looking at the classroom teacher, the 504 coordinator, which in this case is your building coordinators, are your school counselors, an administrator, and a parent. Look, parent, not required. However, we know we're gonna get a lot farther working together and having parents at the table. While it isn't a requirement of the law, it certainly is best practice for us to include our parents. And it could include the psychologist and the student, and the school nurse. We have to evaluate prior to initial placement. That's different than special education evaluation, and I'll explain that in a minute. Again, we use the same rules, those 45 school day rules. That's not really written into the law, but that seems to make the most sense to just follow the special ed rules. And then, you know, from when a parent signs consent, and then we provide the rights. And then we go, I don't know how that just got, let's skip that. So, the evaluation is focused on review and consideration of various sources of relevant data. It doesn't necessarily mean a formal evaluation, okay? General evaluation for 504 may not include new testing. We have data available, and we gather evidence and use existing data sources. If the, if the parent doesn't want to provide that, then we do have the obligation to evaluate, and we'll do that full comprehensive evaluation. So, some of the multiple sources, aptitude and achievement test, staff observations, physical condition of the student, social, cultural background, and adaptive behavior, discipline and attendance, parent input, and healthcare provider reports. Healthcare provider reports are considered medical data, and a doctor's report is not an evaluation. And that's been litigated, and you'll see it was the Vineland, California Elementary School District, based on an Office of Civil Rights complaint in 2007. One thing that isn't in this presentation that I'm just gonna back away from, back into for a second, is while IDEA forces the state to have a due process system and a court system, the civil rights legislation under Section 504 in the ADA is governed by the Office of Civil Rights out of Boston for this area. So, any complaint about a 504 doesn't follow the state process of IDEA. It actually flows down Boston. And it can be quite an arduous process. You can end up having your entire district evaluated, you know, ramps and elevators and everything, based on one 504 complaint that's substantiated. So, it's a, believe it or not, people often don't understand that 504 investigations and remediations can be costly and more serious than the IDEA ones. So, a physician's medical diagnosis may be considered as part of the evaluation process. However, the medical diagnosis of an illness does not automatically qualify a student for Section 504. So, if the, and this happens frequently, if the committee determines they need medical data, because a lot of these conditions are medical conditions, then the next, the best thing to do is get written consent from the parent to get in touch with the doctor, involve the school nurse, and gather that information about what reasonable accommodations the student may require to access school. Eligibility. Does the evaluation show a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more of the major life activities or bodily functions? I'm gonna go into that in a minute. So, physical or mental impairments. Any physiological disorder, condition, or cosmetic disfigurement or anatomical loss affecting one or more of the body systems. Neurological, musculoskeletal, special sense, respiratory, including speech, pretty much everything. And any physical, psychological disorder, and we'll have to scold the federal government for not changing to the appropriate politically correct language of intellectual disability instead of the first one. Organic brain syndrome, emotional or mental illness, and specific learning disabilities can be eligible under Section 504. So, any impairment which makes a major life activity more difficult or burdensome than for the average population of the same age. We're comparing the student with a condition to their non-disabled peers to judge that. Here's where the ADA AA Act amendments comes in and changes sort of the landscape for Section 504. So, before 2008, the conditions were, or the functions were, caring for self, performing manual tasks, walking, seeing, hearing, speaking, breathing, learning, and working. After 2008, we have all those other things, except eating, sleeping, standing, lifting, bending, reading, concentrating, thinking, and communicating. It's not an exhaustive list, and it's expanded. And if we look at Congress's intent, at that point in time, there was a significant over-identification of students with disabilities under IDEA. It was not keeping pace with the disability rate of the overall society. It was outweighing that. Adding those to Section 504 allows for an expanded 504 plan, and then not that need for special education. So, it's a, it's a dance that Congress is performing on purpose. So, here's the big difference. In special education, we can consider mitigating measure, whether that's medication, or, well, with the exception of eyeglasses, or, you know. But in Section 504, we need to mitigate, we need to, we need to evaluate the condition without the mitigation, right? So, what does a student look like if they're not on stimulant medication for attention deficit disorder? What does a student look like that has asthma without an inhaler? And what would a child look like without hearing aids? That's how, that's different than special education. This is not an exhaustive list, but here's some common, common conditions under Section 504. And the big thing off to the side has to do severity and need. We have students who have dyslexia that are covered under Section 504 plans. We also have students with dyslexia that are covered under individual education plans under special education, because the severity and need is such that they need that specialized instruction. So, dyslexia, chronic health conditions, diabetes, severe food allergies, attention deficit disorder, and attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. Psychological conditions, epilepsy, fetal alcohol syndrome, traumatic brain injury. Those are just some common conditions that qualify for Section 504. Then we come, we've done eligibility, then it comes to the plan. So, we need to develop in a plan, and that plan needs to meet the needs of a 504 student as adequately as the needs of non-disabled peers. It provides an equal educational opportunity. It reduces the impact and levels the playing field. It doesn't give unfair advantage, but it lev, and that's important to remember. It's designed to level the playing field. And just like special education, we had a presentation, there is no guarantee of result or maximization, right? It's providing a FAP, a free and appropriate public education. That team needs to understand the impairment and its impact. What's the condition, and how does it interfere compared to non-disabled peers? What does a student need to have the same opportunity? And what accommodations develop or change by the 504 committee? And bold-faced is for a reason. Oftentimes, in education, we talk about accommodations and modifications, and we interchange those words, and that is actually a very concerning practice, because an accommodation is saying, "Hey, you need this to access my curriculum," right? Where a modification is, "Hey, I need to distort the curriculum and reduce the scope and complexity, because that's what you need." That's a special education thing. An accommodation is both a special education thing and a Section 504 issue. Here's an example of some accommodations. Separate space for different tasks, provide an extra set of textbooks, adjust seating, use study guides, peer tutors, pre-recorded books, access to school counseling, behavioral reinforcement, a behavior plan, untimed test, oral test, organizational skills, small group instruction, it goes on. So, I'll give you, I know I've talked about this a little bit, but let's look at the spectrum of the disability. Scenario one, if a student with ADHD needs only organizational aids, behavioral interventions, extra time, preferential seating, and some counseling. That would generally fall under Section 504, right? But in scenario two, we have significantly below grade level, and I'm talking two standard deviations off the mean. So, if the mean is 100, we're looking for under 80 in a standard score. Needs organizational skills, needs a functional behavior assessment and a behavior support plan, because there's significant behavioral issues. Needs accommodations and included in specialized instruction assistance in core academic areas. That would be a student who is typically covered under IDEA. We all know that schools have a legal obligation to keep schools safe, and when we're dealing with some medical conditions, we need to be really careful. Allergies to peanuts. The likelihood of exposure is pretty high. Due to control, we have a duty to control the environment and adhere to the individual health plan, which we'll cover in a minute, and emergency care plan. However, we cannot guarantee peanut-free. We can't control that. We don't know who has peanuts in their pockets, and while we can certainly try and provide that duty, we can't guarantee that. And then we compare how safe they are to non-disabled students who do not regularly face life-threatening reactions to their environment. However, they may get injured somewhere on the playground, because remote possibilities exist. So, a duty to care, but there's some leeway there. One of the misnomers under Section 504 is we talk about, like, medical accommodations, and then we talk about classroom accommodations, but there's many more accommodations than that. We have extracurricular accommodations that we may need to pay for and provide in the form of a staff member, you know, a student who has diabetes, who's participating in an after-school program and needs to have, you know, glucose testing or an insulin administration. If we did that during the day for that student under 504 plan, we would do that for any extracurricular activity the student wanted to access. We, I just said that. You know, another example is a student with a hearing impairment qualifies for the track team. And then one of the accommodations is we're going to train the coach to do, to provide visual cues. Sometimes in cross-country, we've offered another. Sometimes in cross-country, we've offered another team member not on the team, you know, somebody not on the team competing to run with the student to provide him access to that. So, one of the things, the services are not limited to low cost or free. Because special education has its own cost center in a school budget. There's a monetary value that we manage. Section five oh four does not. It's really a general ed fund. So, you know, sometimes like we didn't budget, we can't, no, you don't want to do that. You want to buy, and a typical example is in this district is a student with auditory discrimination that requires an FM system in the classroom and is covered under section five oh four. We purchase those systems. And those are not low-cost systems, but it's what the student needs to be able to access the instruction. The accommodation doesn't have to be the best. It just needs to be appropriate. I would say it just needs to be reasonable. And services, rather than direct services provided by the service provider, consider training an adult in school or on the bus to carry out the service. Diabetes management training is an example of that. And again, funding, there's nothing specific like there is an IDA and it's a general funding source. Part, there's an intersection between health plans and section five oh four that isn't always smooth. We, we try to make it smooth, but there's some challenges there and there has been all along. Most students on health plans maybe need to be made five oh four eligible. Now, seems sort of slightly nonsensical, but we can take a blank five oh four plan and staple the IHP to the back. If they don't need any other accommodations other than medical accommodations and we can call it a day. So we can do things like that. Opposite civil rights. Wants those kids on health plans to be eligible so they have access to five oh four process and safeguards. And that comes from what's called a dear colleague letter that was put out by OCR. And that's actually to, you know, all the five oh four coordinators in the, in the, in the country. So that's another form of guidance that they offer is called a dear colleague letter. Then we have sort of implementing the plan enforcement. So when evaluating whether a district has failed to provide the related aids and services deemed necessary to provide a FAP. The Office of Civil Rights determines whether the placements, aids, and services identified by the district through this process. Is necessary to meet the student's individual needs were or are being provided. They're not evaluating the accommodation itself. They're evaluating whether or not you implemented the accommodation that you determined that the student needs. And if they've not been provided, OCR will determine the district's reason for failing to do so and the impact of that failure. And that creates a legal exposure for the district. Again, we're going to try to review that annually. It's not required, but again, it says it's best practice. We're going to try to include the parents in that. And then we're going to review that every three years to determine whether the student's eligible or not. Anytime a condition changes, gets better or more severe, the team should meet. It says not more than once a year, but if the parents and the district agree, and I don't know why they wouldn't, they can meet more frequently. To make adjustments to the plan based on the changing condition. And then the other thing is we need to remember when a schedule change happens or new, new teachers come on, we want them to have access to the plan. Here's the beauty of technology in your district. Those plans are loaded by access. So if you have five classroom teachers in the high school, five of those teachers are going to have access to that plan. That semester changes and the next group get access to the plan. So that's already in place. So that, that's something we really need to think about other than making sure the plan is uploaded and then infinite campus and the flags. We'll take care of the rest.
And David.
And Becky. Procedural safeguards, we just want to give notice before an action. We want to give notice before an evaluation. We want to give, you know, and a parent can refuse consent, they have a right to due process, they have a right to representation, they have a right to review records. They have, and then they have the right to complain, including OCR. There actually is a, there's a school district grievance process, a section five oh four grievance process. I'm hoping that's what it's called here. Then actually we'll set up a hearing at the local level before we progress on. Something I didn't cover last time is what was called a manifestation determination meeting in special education. I'm going to give you an overview right now because they're relatively the same except for one difference. So when a student with a disability eligible under IDA has been suspended cumulatively or one time for ten days. Then the team, the IEP team is required to get together and perform a manifestation determination review. Same thing for section five oh four. Except, section five oh four eligible students do not have to be manifested, manifested if they're currently using alcohol or drugs or have a violation for that. That's different than special education than IDA.
Scott, can you just review what a manifestation determination is?
Yep, I'm going to actually go, I wanted to give the differences and now I'm going to go. So two questions you have to answer in a manifestation determination meeting. The first is, did the student's disability have a direct and substantial impact on the behavior? The next question you need to do, was the violation in question a direct result of the district's failure to implement the IEP? You have to go through the student file and evaluate all those things. And then you need to make a determination whether it was a manifestation of the disability. If it was a manifestation of the disability, the team needs to order a functional behavioral assessment unless that was already done. And then develop a behavior intervention plan for the student and return the student to the placement that they were removed. So that's both section five oh four and IDA. Is that, do it. And that is the quick version of section five oh four. Questions?
I have one.
The one question I don't want anybody to ask is how many section five oh four students do we have eligible in the district right now? Because we just did October one and I got to go to the flags to figure that out.
Okay, actually it wasn't the question. It was going to be my follow-up question. I hope I get the language right and I hope this question even makes sense. Tell me if it doesn't. But when a student is evaluated for eligibility under five oh four, is the presumption that they've already been evaluated for IEP and that they didn't qualify or?
No, it could be.
Yeah, who writes the five oh four plan or who determines the, is it done within special services?
Nope, it's not a special services. I mean, it is for me, but every.
So Scott's the overseer of five oh four for the district, but it's really the school counselor and the administrator and the team that gets together that kind of says this is the accommodations that the child would need.
Got it, thank you.
But you don't have to make sense.
The IDA process or IEP process to be eligible for a five oh four.
So how many, no, I'm just kidding.
No, no, but oftentimes, I didn't fully answer your question, a lot, no. The, the, your question about making the assumption that if a kid's eligible for five oh four, they've been evaluated for special, that happened, right? But that is not the primary vehicle to get students to five oh four. It's generally referral from the teachers, referral from the parent. We will in an IEP meeting, try to keep those things separate. But in an IEP meeting, if a student does, doesn't meet the criteria for special education, but there's still issues within that special education evaluation. We do refer that to the five oh four team, which is a separate team. So that's part of it. Did I answer your question, Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
A student could have a disability but not qualify for a special education because academic achievement is so strong. Like that would be, so there would be an opportunity.
Okay.
Yeah, if you remember when we talked about special ed, it was that special need for specialized instruction. But when you have a need for related services, that doesn't qualify you for special ed. Speech OTP, speech does, OTP, other behavior, right? But we can capture those under section five oh four.
Yep, okay. I'm clear, thank you.
I have just a quick question. I'm not really sure how to ask it, but we've been talking a lot about multi-tiered systems of support. And so if you have a teacher kind of making a call and saying, you know what, this, this child could potentially use some accommodations. I mean, where does that, how does that tie in with?
To MTSS?
Yeah.
So actually the answer is in one of your board policies. So when you go and look at your general ed intervention policy, there's two ways you refer to special education. And we can say the same thing for five oh four. There's a root for the staff, which requires the MTSS process, right? And then at the end, there can be referrals to section five oh four or special ed. What they're warning you about is the parent needs, right? A parent can refer to special ed five oh four anytime. It is not, it's okay to have that conversation at the table. That, you know, we'd like to let our intervention system see what we get for data and then come back. You can have that, but you cannot say, we're going to do MTSS first and then we'll consider this later.
And one of the tricks with the MTSS is that if you put a plan in place, you've got to give the plan an opportunity to work. And so you've got to collect data over time on that as well. And so like that's one of the tricky parts where it's, you know, sometimes it's not as quick as people may like it, but that's part of that process.
Generally looking at a six-week intervention and then if that doesn't work, a switch. And if you look at your policy, it ties in days-wise to the referral process. I think the way that it's written is that it's, the team meets and then at sixty days, they can refer. So two intervention switches and then a referral.
Okay, so the MTSS comes first unless it's coming.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that again, so that, yeah. And that ties back to the intent of the law. So again, it had to do with over identification. How do we get a general ed intervention system in place with fidelity and collect the data to either refer kids or not to, right? And so good MTSS RTI systems, one of the side effects after years of implementation with fidelity is that you see your disability numbers drop.
And a hearing impairment is a completely different situation than some of the things I was just thinking about asking that question, but there's different, yeah.
But your point's a good one Lisa, because there could be just a doctor's note that just prompts the five oh four being needed to happen. So if someone were to have a hearing loss, you know, they could, you know, a simple five oh four plan can be put in place with some simple accommodations.
Exactly, which is different than, oh, we're struggling with this, you know, whatever math class or whatever, okay.
Any other questions?
Just to get about the, like, the resolution, like when, if a child is, if this was, I don't know, some sort of condition that resolved itself. What is the evaluation? Is it yearly or is it?
If a, if a five oh four eligible student's condition resolves itself, then the team should get together. And they should determine the student not eligible anymore.
So is it every year then, say if you have a student with hearing loss? Is that plan set up sort of just for like the duration or is it a year?
The plan is set up by the year, although it can go longer, but best practice is a year. But the reevaluation is set every three, third year, just like special education.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a ton of information. But it's just, I think it's, sometimes it gets very confusing, those two processes sometimes are very, very close and it makes it hard. And the rules have changed a little bit, which has opened up kind of the five oh four piece. Ryan's is going to give us a quick summary of kind of our October first enrollment, final numbers. And then the other part to this is, is we also just wanted to talk about the numbers that we used to prepare the budget in March. And just kind of giving you kind of our projections were then and where we are today.
So everyone should have this, this page in your packet someplace. That's our certified October one enrollment. We do this every year. So on the left-hand side, about halfway down the page, we have our special education child count. And then at the bottom is basically our October one counts. So you'll see there's an attending number and a subsidy number. And really the difference between those two numbers are our Rollinsford students who pay tuition. They're counted in our attending enrollment, but they are not counted in our subsidizable enrollment. So the difference should be a hundred and forty-two students. That's how many Rollinsford students we had as of October one. So way back at the first board meeting after the first day of school, I reported on the first day of school enrollment. At that time, we had two thousand one hundred forty-five students in the district attending. On October second, I did another brief presentation. At that time, we had two thousand one hundred and thirty students attending in the district. And now when we're certifying the October one enrollment, after we've kind of gone through and purged all the data. The attending enrollment has dropped to two thousand one hundred and twenty-three students. And as you remember back when I presented the first day of school enrollment, I said, those numbers are going to drop as we kind of purged through the data. And that has definitely happened. Looking at our budgeted enrollment, when we did the budget way back in, in March, we kind of use what we currently know is what the current enrollment is. And then we look at the trends for our pre-K and K enrollments and we try to put together a number. Going way back to that number, we were at two thousand one hundred and eight. So we were a little bit under where we ended up, about fifteen students. That's a margin of error of about point seven percent. So, you know, we were reasonably close in our predictions. But I think as we were putting together those numbers, we were, you know, there was some concern about the homeschool factor. And not knowing through COVID and all those types of things, like how many of those students were going to come back. And I did just want to point out, we got a note from the MDOE today. If you look under our counts economic status, those are our free and reduced students. You can see that this year we're at two hundred and twenty-six identified free and reduced students. Last year we were at two hundred and ninety, so there's a drop of sixty-four students, which is twenty-two percent, which is a very large number. I'm going to go back through that data again tomorrow and just take another look at it and see if there's anything that we can do. Because I process myself most of the free and reduced applications this year. But I'm just going to go through them one more time and see if there's anything else that we can do. But the data is kind of what the data is at the same time.
But this is also one of the unintended consequences, I believe, around the state saying that we have free meals for everybody.
Yeah.
And so there, there used to be that, you know, that would be the, the way to be able to show that you could be on the free or reduced lunch piece now. So now there's no correlation to that. So it's really just people willing to do the form as opposed to, with no incentive to do it, so.
So I have said for years, the, the way that the state should do this is everyone does a tax return and reports your income. All you'd have to do is say on the main state return, do you have students in school? Yes, what schools do they attend? Done. And then that would, your free and reduced data would just be right there and it would be reported and it would be accurate.
Oh my gosh, that's too easy.
But that's kind of not the.
Reach out to last year's kids that maybe didn't.
We have a direct search list and we'll go through that again tomorrow. So it would absolutely go through that, yeah.
We cannot just call the families that we were identified last year. We'd have to, if we were going to resend everything back out, we'd have to send it to everyone.
I see. And why is Noble High School on here? Are they, are we?
So those are three students that are outplaced. When we outplace students in schools that are not public schools, they don't show up on this. We do, we have three students that attend, I think it's the Mary Heard Academy. And since it's another public school, that shows up on ours. But they show up as, if you can see, they show up as subsidizable for us because we're paying the tuition to Noble for those students. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
So the next four is like, I think just really a string of some really nice things kind of all came together at the end of the week last week. But just, Rich Luciano was recognized as the NFHS two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Alpine girls ski coach of the year. Fantastic. Ben DeShane was named the SMAA boy soccer co-coach of the year and also has a hundredth win. And the next two, I just think are really, really important is, you know, as they all are. But I just think this is one of the things that we really strive to do. But our girls' field hockey team was named the Class A sportsmanship award winners as well as a girls' cross-country team. And so I think, you know, obviously, you know, we take great pride in the coaches that we hire and the things that we emphasize. But I do think also as a district, we've said that disability is a really important part of what we do. And so just to exemplify how that carries over outside the classroom, I just really take a great deal of pride. And it's something that we're really working very hard on as we made one of our district goals. And just to see these coaches and student athletes really taking that outside of the classroom, not onto the playing field. So it's just really exciting, good things.
That's great.
So congratulations to everybody.
Yeah.
Yep, amazing.
That's wonderful news.
Number nine may seem strange. You know, leave it to Mr. Brunel to get, to give us strange. But Jerry called me and said that with some of the funds that they earned from the grant, they were looking at purchasing a yurt. And so it is not a permanent structure. We are going to get some information about it. Jerry, I don't know if you want to add anything about it?
Todd Hughes will be talking to the local enforcement office and so before we sign on the dotted line, we want to make sure that it's a go. And it's, it's through that rep grant and all of a sudden you start dealing with these people across the state. All of a sudden you make these contacts. And so we were contacted, Sarah Alice had talked to someone that had this yurt now. You know, we've got the outdoor classrooms, we really tried, we really tried to expand the campus. And so it was like, well, this is, I don't want to say it's free money, but it's not district money we'd be using for this. We've got some flexibility and we had to put in a budget of what we thought we were going to spend. And so we talked to the, the rep folks and like, should we switch around money? We feel that, we talked to the staff, you know, are you going to use it? And they said they would, they really liked that idea, so even on those rainy days, we can kind of, it's not go outside. But it will be, it'll probably be placed in one of our, one of the locations of one of our outdoor classrooms. We have to do this, if we decide to, which I, I am, I am so sure we will. We've got to get a crew to drive up to Stone Main. It's up in the mountain someplace. So we'll have to take a Saturday or Sunday to grab a crew of people to go up, take it down. The folks there will help transport it back for us, but we'll have to, we'll put it up, so it's, it's quite an endeavor, but we really think it's a, it'll be pretty neat to have a school.
That's really cool. I noticed that there was one at the Noble School District that you're, you probably see it when you drive by. Yeah, well, I wonder if you wouldn't mind like reaching out to them and just asking if, what is happening with it during off-hours? Because one of the concerns I have is that it being used for other things, because that's what usually happens in school districts when they put in enclosed structures in towns, and I am concerned that if there's no cameras on it, yeah.
And that's a, that's a permanent yurt. This is, this is a, this is more of a tent yurt. So just so we're.
Oh, they'll use anything.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, but I just.
And, but we, we had thought the same thing.
Okay, good.
And then it is like, do you, do you not do something because you're nervous about what might happen?
Right.
And so we talked about that, and we just said, no, we are willing to, to give it a shot, but we, we, I got to look at cameras.
Yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to know. Great.
Need any advice, talk to Dr. De'Aaron about Central School. That's an ongoing issue, you know, vandalism there, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Did you skip number four?
I was wondering that.
I think you skipped number four.
Yeah, 100% did. Oh, all right. Well, number four, sorry. We are having a district-wide presentation next Wednesday. It's going to be, starting at about 5:30, where we're going to have some different opportunities for families kind of presented in the front of the building, where we're going to have Chartwells. Sweets will be there. We're going to do a little Camochis presentation. Our student government will be there. Yeah, Choose to be Healthy Coalition will be there. What's the other one? Count Me In will be there, and so just some resources for families, around some things that are available in the community. And then at 6 o'clock, there's going to be this incredible presentation about how to support your anxious child. And so parents are certainly invited to come in, listen for about a half hour, then there'll be about a half hour question and answer. Where Stephen Quinlan, who is a licensed clinical social worker in the area, who's going to be doing some, some great work for us. So we're really excited about it. We're trying to really get the word out, you know, that's something we're really working on. I kind of shared with, with the group at 6 o'clock, but we're really trying to, you know, with any message we're sending out, that three, that's a few ways to get a message out. Like, one way of getting a message out is just not, does not work any longer, and so like, what are the three different, you know, avenues that we're going to get a message out? You know, email, Thrill Share, Facebook. We have a lot of different options that we can use, so we really want to get that out there as best we can. So we're really excited about it, so. Any questions?
And Johnny, what do you say about, how about Kid Reed?
Oh, yeah, Eric Waddell emailed me last week and just said, look, you know, hey, this sounds a great opportunity. Rowan must have shared the email, you know, so that's perfect. And then he said, you know, would it be open to our families as well? And we said, absolutely. So it's a great chance to partner with the neighboring community as well, so.
Can I just add?
Yeah.
One piece, that it's, Mr. Quinlan's going to tailor his presentation to all ages, so it's not just.
The little ones.
The little ones, yeah. It will be meaningful to parents across the district.
That's great.
I think the really, the beautiful thing that when he came and spoke to us, he really talked about was that, you know, being anxious is normal. You know, and that like, this is, this is something that impacts everybody, you know, and so it's really being able to help that when it becomes debilitating, and how do you, how do you manage it as a parent when you see your children struggling? So I think, you know, we're really excited and a very timely topic, so. And that really does conclude my, my part, and so we're going to turn it over to the students.
All right, well, fall sports have sadly come to an end. Both Boys and Girls Soccer Heather got a bye in the quarterfinals game, and both played incredible games against Sheverus and Wyndham last Wednesday night. Both teams went out in double overtime and lost to PK shootouts, which is hard, but no other, no other way we'd rather go out. Marshwood Football lost this past Friday night to South Portland as well. And Girls Field Hockey lost in double overtime against Falmouth in the first round of playoffs. The Marshwood Girls Cross Country Team was the Class A state runner-up on Saturday, advancing to the New England Championship that'll be held on Saturday, November 12 in Rhode Island. And I just said, congratulations to Sidney Purgison for placing 34th at the New England Regional Golf Championship on Monday at the Mohegan Sun Golf Course in Connecticut. This is Sidney, Sidney finished her high school career as the first female from Marshwood to ever make it to the regional tournament, so a big congrats to her. And just a congrats to all the sportsmanship winners, and Mr. DeShane and Mr. Luciano, and now we're on to winter sports. And then student government, the mural has been approved, and options will be sent out to students for design options. So hopefully that'll be on this way within the next weeks for production. And then the school mock election will be held next Monday, the 7th, during Hawk Block. A physical ballot will be given to advisors, where the students will fill them out in advisory, and a New Hampshire and Maine will be given out. This is being done by student government and AP Gov students, so this is overseeing by students mostly. And this month's theme is gratuity, voting, and veterans. So you'll be seeing that throughout the weeks of the Hawk Blocks and the Tuesday advisories. And student government is trying to get a mini grant from the MEF to spruce up the learning environment in the school, like lounge furniture to place around the school, plants, new chairs and desks to help enliven the environment in school and in classes as well.
All right, for extracurriculars, the marching band won a silver medal at the finals on Saturday, the 29th at Bedford. Mr. Gration, thumbs up. Eight band and chorus students auditioned for the District One Honors Festival and were accepted. Three students are auditioning for the All-State Music Festival this weekend. Five MHS marching band students are performing in the Macy's Day Parade. The Quiz Bowl team competes at Coney High School this Saturday, contesting against Wyndham, Coney, Gould Academy, and Chenery Middle School. From Mass, I am terrified for the middle school match that I'll be going in, but it's okay. The Civil Rights Team is preparing for this Friday, which is the National Day of Welcome. The new banner will be up soon, inviting all students to attend civil rights meetings. And now, since it's the beginning of November, my in-general little summary is kind of short, but that's okay. November kicks off with discussions surrounding the upcoming election and a challenge for students to participate in. The Environmental Club has charged MHS students with a challenge if they're willing to sign up. It's called No Plastic November. If students so choose, they can sign a pledge to not use non-reusable plastic for the entire month in an effort to lower our plastic waste percentage. Students, yep, that's all on that. Students are preparing for the last day of the first quarter, which is November 4. And seniors are starting to turn in college applications with early decision and action deadlines that are coming around. And lastly, the school newspaper is due on November 16, produced by Miss Rumbles Journalism Class. I'm going to give you guys a sneak peek, since I'm in that class, just a brief rundown on the articles. They include information on banned books, 236 roadwork, the Danish Students' Visit, and I am working solo on a piece about Mr. Bowden and his time at Marshwood High School.
Just one other quick update. Tony Burman and Todd Hughes are meeting with the lighting company tomorrow morning to do a final walkthrough of every room, just to make sure everything's working correctly. Part of that is, is making sure that physically things are working. All the jobs have been done. We have that 5% holdback. We want to make sure everything's up to par before we do anything. The other part, though, which is a little bit trickier, is that we have to be able to work with staff to teach them how to use the system. One of the things that we're struggling with a little bit is that if you turn the system off, you have to push the reset button when you turn it back on in order to have all the other functions. It will still turn off if you leave the room, but you'll lose the dimming functions and those other types of things. So we just have to, this can be an educational piece of helping staff understand how to do that. But we'll do that final walkthrough tomorrow, is my understanding, so. Great, and that concludes our report.
Excellent, thank you so much. We have received no correspondence upon which to report, so we'll move into the report of the committees. Finance and Facilities will next meet on November 16. That's two weeks from tonight, and we'll have a report out from them at that time. Ed Policy met on the 26th of October.
We did. Yes, so we have nine first readings this evening. And most of note was that we met with a group of wonderfully articulate and knowledgeable students here at the high school and their advisor, and we discussed the transgender guidelines as we are looking at updates, bringing it legally, current, and just sort of a comb through of our guidelines there. And sort of, they gave great feedback. And we definitely realized that they are certainly ahead of not only language around the legal, like, the legal stuff needs to catch up with the language, and so hearing from them was wonderful. And just sort of philosophically to hear where they're at, and they gave some really great feedback. So it was great to have a two-way dialogue with them about some of their concerns with the guidelines and what the changes they would like to see. So that was really great.
Can I ask, is there like a follow-up step in this process?
Yeah, so we've gotten feedback from administrators. We've gotten back from all of our school counselors. We've got it back from students, and then we've taken those questions and give them to Governor Woodson to be able to get some clarity on some questions that we have around the, the guidelines, and then we'll bring it back to the Policy Committee in December.
Okay.
Uh, no, sorry, in November, pardon me.
Excellent, thank you.
It was great. Students were great. It was great.
And that's it, we can go through the changes when we do the first readings?
Okay, awesome. And then Wellness SEL met earlier this evening.
Yeah, I mean, okay, keep it super brief, because the focus was on what Mr. Calverly has already shared, the upcoming Supporting Your Anxious Child Student Event that's coming up on November 9. We're really hoping that a lot of parents and, and community members will come and enjoy that, and also pick away and investigate so many of the resources that Mr. Calverly mentioned as well prior to that. So I think doors open at 5:30 for the wellness information.
I wanted to say vendors, but it's not vendors.
Yeah, the wellness resource providers, and then the, the presentation is at 6 o'clock. And at 6:30, I think we move into a Q and A, so it should be a really, a really fun and informative evening. And I think some of the rest of what we talked about was just like, what's next? You know, how can we, how can we keep this, these informational opportunities going long-term? What is it that people are interested in? What's needed? You know, we have a lot of the Integrated Wellness Survey results coming in. We have all of this kind of data, the SEL data coming in, and so that might help sort of dictate where we go next, but we're also looking for apparent input, so those of you who are actually coming on November 9, please speak up, send us an email, do what you can, whatever it is that you're interested, and we definitely want to hear from you.
Cool, thank you. That concludes the report of the committees and brings us to new business, a bunch of which we have apparently. So let's start with a motion, please, to approve this fundraising application.
I move to approve the application for fundraising at school events from the Marshwood High School Girls Basketball Boosters, a shoot-a-thon, players shooting free throws for pledges.
I think you did number two.
Yeah, oh, oops. I'm sorry. I move to approve the application for fundraising school events from the Marshwood High School Girls Basketball Boosters for creating an online store to purchase Marshwood Girls Basketball swag through Seacoast Printing. Funds will assist in covering annual costs of running program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
And so I've put this on here intentionally, and I just, more so for us to have a conversation. I, in my personal opinion, I didn't think this was necessarily, when we talked about fundraising, what the board was talking about. This is kind of stuff that happens on a regular basis, but we've never really talked about it formally before, so I brought it forward tonight to vote on it, but I also, I guess my bigger question is, is do you want to see these from all of the booster groups? Because this just seems like, I think, getting people apparel isn't necessarily like, we're, we're talking more about like, you know, selling, you know, gold cards, those types of things, as opposed to like buying t-shirts or something like that. That's, that's what, how I kind of had the policy, but I just wanted to be able to put that out to you. That's why I put it on.
Yeah, maybe we set like a, like the expected fund amount that they are planning to raise, because I bet they're only going to raise a couple hundred dollars in commission. But, you know, there might be a golf tournament that raises $5,000.
Exactly, right. And that's, and this, some of this is cultural, right? Like, you want to have people be excited about the season, so parents are going to buy their sweatshirts and that type of stuff.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so technically, it should come to the board if it's a, it's a, it's a recurring fundraising activity, which this.
This is.
Yeah, recurring for sure.
And it's not just girls basketball. It's been everybody.
I thought it only had to come to the board if it was new, and outside of the fundraising calendar that boosters need to give in, in the summertime for the upcoming year, or be preseason for the.
It's just new. It's just a new.
Well, it's just new ones.
It's just new ones. Where we get a little bit is like volleyball's a totally new program.
Oh, yeah, right.
So technically, everything's new, and so, but I, I guess philosophically, I just wanted to kind of get our heads around it. And again, I truly appreciate they were trying to follow the policy. This is great, you know.
Yes, and if the purpose is to encourage that going forward, I see no harm in putting stuff like this to the board.
You would like to see it?
You folks are all right with that, I presume.
Is it anything special that they, like, skin up their back type of thing that they have to do? Is it difficult for them? Is it like a lot of hoops to jump through?
No, it's not a hoop to jump through, but, but it's, it's, it's the consistency piece, right? And so like, like, we've had, some groups have been doing this for 15 years before the policy went into place, so technically it's been happening before, so it's technically already been approved, whereas.
Looks like this, it's in our packet.
You know, so.
I think it would be.
If you're okay, I'll use my discretion, you know, and if I have any questions, we'll add it to the agenda. Is that okay?
That sounds great.
That sounds great, yeah.
Because I, I do, I want to encourage this, but I also don't.
Right, yeah.
And the other piece is kind of the out of season, and what we don't want is we don't want.
Right, competing.
This is not, yeah, you know, we're having a golf tournament this, you know, on Saturday, October 4, and we're going to have one October 5.
But we wouldn't, but we as a board, and I, just because I've been in this from the ski booster side of things, we as a board don't know the overarching picture, like Mr. Buzzles does, and.
Remember, Elaine has the master calendar now. For any fundraising, Elaine has the master calendar, so we don't have that.
So everything goes in from the fundraising calendar from each team ahead of time, so that another team can't also do the X, Y, Z in the same system. Like, there's, there is, it's all very organized.
Yeah.
So I can see where something, oh, shoot-a-thon wasn't part of that, then it should, then it, it needs to be looked at in, in the bigger scope, and then it comes to us for approval. That makes sense to me.
Yep.
Very much so.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? All in favor? That is 6-0, thank you. You have a motion, please, with regards to the second fundraising application from the girls' basketball team.
I'll move to approve the application for fundraising at school events from the Marshwood High School Girls Basketball Boosters, a shoot-a-thon, players shooting free throws for pledges.
Second, Heather.
Heather, thank you. Okay, same thing applies. Sounds pretty straightforward. Comments or questions from the board? All in favor? 6-0, thank you very much.
May I make one comment? There was one application fundraiser that I sent back to the principal and to Mr. Buzzles because I was concerned that it did not meet our booster fundraising criteria. And so just so you know, I'm sending that back to be able to get some information, to make sure we're following what, what the rules are, what the intended rules are, so.
That brings us to our first readings. Motion, please, with regard to JICIA.
Immediately approve the first reading and discussion of policy JICIA, Weapons, Violence, and School Safety. Second, Jen.
Jen, thank you.
So what, so why, I'm just curious about the taking out of suspend and/or recommended expulsion. Is that just what the legal team recommended?
Yeah, so the real big idea is they wanted to put the, this came from Governor Woodson. They wanted to put the restorative interventions in, and then they said just, disciplinary process covers all of that. So it just kind of broadens it a little bit, but the restorative practices piece was really the substantive change.
There are options other than suspend or dis, or spell.
Mediate, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
I had the same question, Heather, when I went through it, and I had to read it a couple times, like, okay, I got it in that one.
Okay.
Yep, because I first read it, like, we weren't able to do that anymore. Like, no, that's not what it says, so I just had to get clarity.
This psychological evaluation and risk assessment paragraph is new?
This is new.
Recommended by Drummond Woodsom as well?
Yeah, this was an optional policy, addition to the policy. But I think, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is really, we feel like this would be another tool in the toolbox to be able to give the support that we need and get the information that we need to best support the children, the family in the district.
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent. School counselor, study guidance counselor, love it.
Cleaning up the language there, that's good. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor? I see six hands, thank you, six oh. May I have a motion, please, with regard to J I C I A dash R?
I move to approve the first reading and adoption of new policy J I C I A dash R Weapons Violence and School Safety Administrative Procedure.
I'll second, Kate.
Thanks, Kate.
It's just a brand-new procedure altogether? Or... Oh, no, I'm thinking of something else.
This is, you know, there's no change.
Okay, oh, okay, okay. All right, we just have to attach the procedure when we talk about the policy, okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Okay. Comments or questions? All in favor? That is six oh, thank you. And a motion, please, with regard to J I C I A dash E one.
I'll move. We approve the first reading and adoption of new policy J I C I A dash E one Weapons Violence and School Safety Report Form of Dangerous Behavior by Students.
I'll second, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Jen, do you want me to talk about this real quickly?
Sure, yep.
There was a change in state law. And so basically, this is the reporting form that if there is dangerous behavior by students, this is the form that we would use universally that we would be able to complete. And so that was part of the state law that passed earlier, or late last year, I believe. So this is, this is brand-new.
Requiring us to have...
Requiring us to have, you know, the form.
Right. Can we correct the spelling of the word dangerous in the title? I mean, it could be dangerious as well.
Dangerous.
Dangerous, yes.
I'm sorry, those things just jump out at me.
Elaine, did you get that?
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that one spelling correction? All in favor? That is six oh, thank you.
This is a crazy question, but how does this then tie in with, say, the new bus driver, like, behavior concern process that we just put into place?
So we would, this would amp it up.
Okay, this is like the next level.
This is kind of the next level, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So like with the bus driver piece, like we're trying, like I'm going to use the best word that I can. We want the bus driver transportation staff to build a report with families. That's the big idea.
That's the whole idea, yeah.
We want them to make those calls for students, and I'm going to use the word naughty, like feet in the, you know, in the, in the aisle way, you know, sitting up in your seat, like make those calls to say, hey, Mom and Dad, this is what we saw with John today. Could you please help us with this? It would be a great help. Like building that relationship, anything beyond that, we want that to be done at the building level. And this would be part of that next step.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, then, with regard to J I C?
Move to approve the first reading and adoption of new code J I C, current code J I C D A, Student Code of Conduct.
I'll second, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
So this will replace eventually?
Yeah. Do we still have J I C D A?
Yeah, we do have J I C D A. But we have to get this policy established before we get rid of the other policy. So this will be, we're recoding it, basically is what we're doing. So we're going to get rid of J I C D I, D I A, sorry, the next meeting after we do approve the second reading of this.
Got it.
So...
And this was the one where it talks about recess. Is this the one? Recession not being withheld under fifth grade?
Under elementary schools, that doesn't be, also talks about the expulsion piece. And then also adds like the cigarettes vaping information to this.
Yeah. And this is, so this is, all of this is fairly new then. And this is just so much new that they're replacing the whole thing.
Yeah, there was a lot of just language changes. And so I think what we decided was, you know, this makes the most sense just to go with the new policy.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The sentiment is very much the same, it's just the wording of these things are a little bit different. And, you know, again, the...
And the highlighted text, is that text which differs from what was in J I C D A?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
So what if you wanted to keep a student in from recess to provide them with like a learning opportunity about the code of conduct? So, yeah.
Technically, you should not do that. They are saying that you cannot take a child's recess away, you know.
Well, except when recess is the only time when restorative interventions can occur. So that's actually right here.
Yeah.
A lot of these kids need their recess, you know, they need to run around.
Right, right, right. But I'm just wondering, it's just, it's just interesting that a legal team would suggest that?
That came from, no, that's state law. That came from, from the, yeah, from state domain. So that was one of those ones that you just say, I understand the sentiment because kids need recess, but would you rather have them miss math? You know, I'm like, there's the yin and the yang, right? And so, you know, you just, you know, it, you know, discipline of elementary school students is a delicate balance. You know, so, you know, so that's one of the things that the state domain came up with.
Interesting, yeah.
That was a lot of change.
Yeah.
Maybe they can be pulled out for lunch.
Right.
I mean, they can eat lunch and have a conversation at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true.
Any other questions or comments? First reading, we'll be looking at this again in a couple of weeks. All in favor? That is six oh, thank you. And that brings us to J I C dash R. If I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the first reading and adoption of new policy J I C dash R Student Code of Conduct Administrative Procedure.
I'll second, Kate.
Thank you, Kate. So the other hand looks unchanged. Okay.
Really the same, same investigation procedure that we're using under the other policy?
Yep.
But just trying to have that consistency across the board.
I'm, what am I missing? I feel like I'm looking at the wrong thing.
J I C...
That's not the same title that's at the top.
J I C dash R? J I C dash R Student Code of Conduct Administrative Procedure?
But this says procedure addressing reports on dangerous student.
That's the, that should be changed. That should be read as a development on the policy. You're right, yeah.
Am I going crazy? Okay.
It is the administrative procedure.
Right.
It's what we're voting on, but the title of it is Procedures Addressing Reports of Dangerous Student Behavior.
Okay.
And that's, that's this.
Oh, okay, so that just...
This form...
This is correct.
This is correct. This tells us how to do this. This is the procedure that we have to follow. This is the exhibit.
Okay, so the motion was around a title of Student Code of Conduct Administrative Procedure, but the title of the G I C dash R is your point, Lisa, is procedure addressing reports of dangerous students.
Yes.
So should the motion be corrected to read the, for the title to agree with what we're...
No, that, it's just that our notes in here are just wrong.
Okay.
Number seven is worded without...
So it should be, we should vote that down and then say consideration action to approve the first reading and adoption of the modified policy of J I C dash R Procedure Addressing Dangerous Student Behavior.
Who's going to do that?
All right, so let's, yeah, let's, let's first of all vote on, on the, the motion as read. All in favor?
That's a no.
We don't want a no.
Oh, no.
And opposed is... Okay, so opposed is six oh.
So nay.
I was six.
And let's, if I may have now a motion, we'll call it seven A.
Okay. I move...
With the correct title.
Yes.
I'm going to give this a shot.
Yep.
We approve the first reading and adoption of new policy J I C dash R Procedure Addressing Reports of Dangerous Student.
Sounds right to me.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Kate.
Kate, thank you, okay. All right, now that we've got that straight. Otherwise unchanged?
Correct.
All in favor? That is six oh. Very good, thank you. That brings us to J I C dash E one. And before we make the motion, let's make sure the title agrees.
Yeah, that's right.
Is it the same form, though, as J I?
Yes.
Okay. We just have to have a form.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we decided to put form in both places just to ensure that it was being used because the two policies are very similar.
Yes, they are.
So just wanted to make sure we had the, the pattern of investigation and the form the same.
Okay.
Is it okay that they have the same name?
Yeah.
Okay, and dangerous one's being fixed again.
Student Code of Contact Report Form.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, so would someone make a motion, please?
Move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy E B C A Comprehensive Health and Safety Report.
Nope, 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 we're on eight, we're on eight.
Oh, 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 sorry, I thought we...
Nope, nope.
Oh, wait, yeah, move to, I shouldn't even do this. I move to approve the first reading and adoption of new policy J I C, is it dash E I?
E one, yep.
One, I'm, one, sorry. Student Code of Contact Report of Dangerous Behavior for students. For some reason, I got confused.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, same form, same correction on the spelling on dangerous.
Oh, there it is.
Should student code of conduct be in there? Is it just report of dangerous behavior by student form?
I think it's okay because it's referring to the overriding policy of student code of conduct. I think we're okay with that.
Yeah, the report form of dangerous behavior is the important part.
Although it's the same...
It's the same thing.
Same form.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor? That's six oh, thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, with regard to E B C A? If you wanted to do that, Heather?
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy E B C A Comprehensive Health and Safety and Emergency Management Plan, former title Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
I'll second, Kate.
Thank you, Kate.
So this is using the MSMA recommendation that we add health and safety to the title? So we have a steering committee?
Yeah, and that's, and that's the change in the law. You know, so that basically says, you know, this is the group, so every building has its own crisis team. And then we have our district-wide crisis programming. And then we also have kind of the community-wide group that we're building together right now. And so as soon as this is finished, we have, you know, Mr. Buzzl did the presentation, then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Looks good.
Excellent.
Yep. Comments or questions? All in favor? That is six oh, thank you. Motion, please, with regard to E B C C.
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy E B C C Bomb Threats.
I'll second, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. This is an existing policy, is it not?
It's, it's not.
No changes.
There are no changes?
The only thing is, it's under the cross-reference, yeah.
Okay.
I'll change the title of that.
Right.
That's a change of title, though, right? Not just a cross-up?
Yeah, it used to be comprehensive emergency management plan, and they just added the health and safety. So we'll change that as well, so...
So that's just being updated.
That would be updated, that's correct. And this is a, now it's been thirteen years, so this is good that we're doing this.
Oh, wow. Wow, look at that.
Okay. Other comments or questions? All in favor? That's six oh, thank you very much. And last among these is E B C C. That should be, no, there is no dash, E one. There appears not to be a dash.
Sorry. Dep, plus a little, no dash, that's weird.
There's no dash on the form or on the motion?
Or on the thing, huh.
So let's make that change.
Maybe that should be there?
So we want the dash.
We want the dash.
And the dash.
May I, may I have that motion, please?
I will do that and I'll include the dash. I move we approve the first reading and discussion of policy E B C C dash E one Bomb Threat Report Form.
I'll second, Rebecca.
Okay. Thank you. Is this a new form? Because it's entirely highlighted.
No, it's not a new form.
It's just yellow.
But it's new to bring it to the policy manual, putting it with the policy. So this form has existed in our emergency management plan years ago.
Got it.
And now we're bringing it, updated and bringing it into the, the policy together.
Yep.
And this is now part of our new Health and Safety and Emergency Management Plan.
Very good. Wow. I hope we never revoke this policy.
I know, I was going to say, they do not get excited or excited, do not open desk doors or closet doors.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
There's just one...
Sorry, good.
Tiniest little thing on this form, do not open desk doors or closet doors. I think that should be a period instead of a, whatever that is. Backslash.
Yep.
Forward, actually, that's a forward slash.
Third line down.
The stay calm line, the very last punctuation should be a period.
Yep.
Tiny little thing.
Elaine, are you seeing that?
No, so I didn't hear what you said.
So on the fourth line down, on the, stay calm, don't get excited or excited others, do not open desk doors or closet doors. Rather than the slash, it should be a period.
Instead of slashed, it's a period, okay.
And then it should be form E B C E dash one.
Dash E one.
Dash E one.
Dash E one.
Sorry. Okay, with that punctuation change, all in favor? That is six oh, thank you. And that concludes our new business.
So the next time we vote on those, we'll have two more policies that would be eliminated.
Rescinding, yep.
Yep.
Good, good, excellent. We have our lower grades checking in this evening. Who wants to go first?
Sure, we had our big monster mile on Monday, so it was a huge success, a perfect day, perfect after trick-or-treating thing to do for the kids. And I just had to thank our PTO, they're just amazing. Like, it's come to, we don't even have to do anything now. You know, it's just staff, they just run it. And they've raised over thirty thousand dollars so far. so far, and it's still coming in, checks are still coming in, businesses have donated, it's amazing, so just a big thank you to the community and everyone that participated, and it was really fun this year to bring everybody back, we could have all spectators, so seeing it was a really, a big family event, with lots of high-fiving and cheering, so it was just really fun. We also last week had our book fair night that we haven't been able to have in many years, so having our family night, the kids were so excited just to see each other outside of the classroom, we haven't really had an event, like, for concerts where it's like free-flowing, and it was our, we haven't sold, we sold eight thousand dollars worth of books that we haven't done in a really long time, so we paired it with an ice cream social, so that was a good motivator, too. Yeah, it was really good, so it was really fun. And then today we had our girls-on-the-run practice, which is, which is a really favorite day for us, I get to hold the finish line tape, so it was really neat to see the girls, we had, I think, ten girls running, and then just cheering for each other, you know, and some were so, like, crying, so it was so hard, then when they see that the finish line running, just really cheering, so it's just a beautiful day, and Erin, Erin Darling, Dean Vichell, and Caitlin Howell, and we have Abby Kuchar coming back just to help run, so it was just a really fantastic day, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. Did you hear about the pumpkin patch at Elliott Elementary School? Kate did. But we had a pumpkin patch at Elliott Elementary School, it was amazing. Kids in third grade created pumpkins, on the pumpkins you could see the character traits that they'd taken from a character within a book that they chose. We had close to a hundred parents come in and visit and talk with each of the kids about their character and how it was represented with the pumpkin, so they had a lot of fun, it was great to have folks come back into the building and talk with the kids, kids had a ball. School safety, we continue to emphasize that at Elliott Elementary School, just like the other schools do. We practiced the fire drill this week, and then on November 8th, part of our plan for the teacher workshop is to place some emphasis on Alice and continue our training around that, so we've developed a plan that reflects that need. Frog Town puppets, Frog Town puppets came to town. The three puppeteers are all siblings, they're amazing, they work so well together, and they've been doing it for years, but the kids really enjoyed the presentation, they got to ask questions at the end, the folks that were doing the work, the puppeteers, did an excellent job, they were patient with the questions, they encouraged kids to ask more questions, so it was a, it was a really good time. The theme was the Headless Horseman, which drew some eyes and, in several reactions, so that was fun. Parent-teacher conferences at Elliott tomorrow night, so staff are gearing up for that, they've done a great deal of preparation, and we'll share some findings with parents tomorrow, and things that the parents will learn from that conference, and things that maybe they can support at home as well, so it's a, it's a great beginning of a partnership for this year between parents and teachers. And I would share that Reese's Across America is coming back to Elliott, Elliott Elementary School and the Elliott Community, we're really excited about that, and Schisler, in collaboration with members of the Elliott Community and School Department, will work in collaboration around the logistics associated with that. It is scheduled for December 12th, and more information will be shared as, as the plans develop. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so at Great Works, I, tonight we had a, we do a pie sale for a fundraiser, so I was running around, and we got like eight hundred pies to get to people, you know, and it's seventy-five degrees out, you know, you want it about thirty, because everything is melting, but anyway, as I was walking through the building, I was like, what are all these kids doing here? And really, when I looked at the activities that we had after school today, we had a group, and these, we had a group of kids that were doing fairy houses. We had a Scott Patch came up with the high school, and it's great they got a bus here,